Is now nine oh one AM and I now declare this meeting officially open. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. But I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nations people in attendance today. Please note, this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of meetings policy. As a visitor in this public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. Councillors, I was just wondering if I can start off this morning organising a minute silence for Kath Swift. Kath Swift was ninety-four years old and she passed away surrounded by relatives in her home on the Sunshine Coast. Kath was born in Boya but lived in Kamalwyl till she was ten. And in nineteen thirty-nine, she moved to Mount Isa where she stayed until two years ago. Kath was granted an Order of Australia for her fundraising achievements for leukaemia. And she started leukaemia in nineteen seventy-eight and she raised money for more than forty years for local families whose children had leukaemia. And she did things at the beginning, like just paying their electricity bills and helping them out with bills. And she soon had a big team behind her. And I don't think anyone who's grown up in Mount Isa could have got through Kmart without being hit up by Mrs Swift for raffle tickets. They got behind the rodeo queens and if you didn't run with her backing you, you had your back against a wall. I think Kim Coghlan ran against Katie Swift, a leukaemia entrant, in nineteen eighty-five. And it was very hard to beat them because they were powerhouses for raising money for leukaemia. Mrs Swift also got the prestigious Rotary Award, the Paul Harris Fellowship. Her and her husband George lived in Mount Isa and had four children. And a lot of people may remember that Andrew Denton interviewed her for an hour in two thousand and seven and it was about Mount Isa and her history. So while we're celebrating a hundred years of Mount Isa, we've got a lady who had been here since nineteen thirty-nine. So if you can imagine, Mount Isa was just sixteen years old. And she really can't claim that she was here the entire time because Kamalwyl really didn't become part of Mount Isa until nineteen sixty-two. But I don't think there's one local person here who grew up here that didn't know Kath Swift. And her funeral is today and we're all thinking of her. And I was just wondering if we could do a minute silence. I'm just seeing if I can set my clock by it. Not very good at this. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone. And I just want to add to that that Mrs Swift's family will be bringing Kath Swift home to be buried with her husband next year. So there'll be an opportunity for us to get together as a community to recognise Mrs Swift. Now I'd like to invite, and this is the first time she's been here, Bella Bush from the Victory Life Church, who's going to provide counsel with a prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you that we could gather here today in your name to give you all the praise and glory and honour. Father God, bless the people that are here in this meeting and every decision they make for the city of Mount Isa. Father God, we just lift it up to you that you would lead them, guide them and direct them in you. Lord, they are blessed today coming in and blessed going out. And Lord, we give you all the praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bella. Really appreciate that. And we don't have any apologies today. Everyone is here. So now we will go to item four, which is public participation. And we have a presentation of employee recognition of service awards. And I have some wording here. So what I might do is if the employees comfortable, would you like to come out to the front? And I'll just read out some words or stand up. Yeah, come in the front.
Into the arena.
I remember.
Okay. Well, Jason Newell. Jason commenced with council on the sixteenth of September twenty thirteen as a compliance officer in the development and land use team. Jason worked his way up through a number of roles and is today council senior's planning officer. It can be said that Jason is one of council's most expressive and passionate employees and a person who has, from the get-go, put his hand up to join the wider council and community activities. You can count on Jason to be there every August, Jason working on the council float and foyer display. Jason is knowledgeable, friendly, experienced and passionate. He knows how to deliver his work with the exact right balance of professionalism and fun. Jason is an excellent ambassador for not only council but for the wider Mount Isa community. Before I go on, I'll just acknowledge Fiona. And Fiona, today is a double celebration because Fiona also commenced with council on the sixteenth of September two thousand and thirteen. Fiona's first role was an administrative support officer, also in the development and land use team. Fiona was promoted into the property search officer role in twenty sixteen. Fiona's accuracy and meticulous eye for detail is somewhat legendary around these parts and her diligent work ethic demonstrates her commitment to her job, her team and her community. Caring, conscientious and considerate are words that fit Fiona well. She's also been described as a team mum, always available for friendly word or some wise advice. Fiona is also quite literally responsible for a second generation of council staff. This apple has not fallen far from the tree, as they say, with her daughter Letitia forging ahead with her own career right here at council. And these words have been put together by our HR manager. With so much change, it is terrific to have staff with history, knowledge, dedication to help tell the story, keep continuity and service in the community. It's wonderful to be able to celebrate Jason and Fiona and their ten years' contributions to the Mount Isa City Council. And before I hand over to Tim, congratulations on ten years. It's very rare now that employees stay with any organisation for more than a couple of years. And that's a full credit to yourselves. And we are very lucky to have both of you here. And as councillors, we just acknowledge that it's the staff at this council that run the city and make us look good at times. So thank you very much for your ten years. I know that everyone at council is behind you guys. And I'll get Tim to present the certificates, but if you don't mind, I'd love to hear a few words from both of you.
I don't like the sound of my voice. I don't really have too much to say, but I don't know where the ten years have gone. There's been some pretty tough times but good times. I'm sure Jason would agree that having good managers, we'd have to name Donna and Gail. It's kept our team together pretty good, hey?
When I come to council, I said that I, Gail was like, oh, you'll do three. I was like, oh, three? I guess I could do three, then it went to five, then to six, then to seven, then to eight, then to nine, then to ten. And I think every year, I think people are getting sick of me saying, yeah, I think I'm going to leave. So, you know, but I think if you really want to make a good contribution in the town, I think you need to get involved in all the communities around, like, you know, the sporting groups, to get involved with the rodeo, the race days and stuff like that, to really enjoy yourself, like, you know, entrench yourself into the community and makes you want to stay longer. So, thanks for that.
That was good. That's okay?
Oh, you're just missing the raise. Oh, you're not, Phil. Well done.
Another morning tea.
Nothing wrong with that. Nothing wrong with that. They're the best thing they invented.
Okay, so councillors, this now takes us to item five, which is the confirmation of previous meeting minutes. But, so, sorry. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation for item five point one, which is the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twenty-third of August twenty twenty-three?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twenty-third of August two thousand and twenty-three be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Thank you. Can I get a second of that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item six, actions from previous council meeting and six point one, which is the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the thirteenth of September twenty twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the thirteenth of September two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Can I get a second of that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Item seven is declarations of conflict of interest. Does any councillors in attendance have any declarations of conflict of interest with the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, through the chair, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in item sixteen point one and I'll be leaving the meeting.
Thank you. And what was the conflict of interest, councillor?
My nephew owns the real estate in question.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us now through to the merril minute, which is nil. And then that takes us to item nine, which is reading and consideration of correspondence, which is nil. And then that takes us to item ten, which is notices of motion and ten point one, which is a notice of motion from the mayor, councillor Danny O'Slave. And because this is my motion, I'll move it. I'd like to move the motion that council investigates providing options for water charging and allocations in the form of a report to council ordinary meeting in November twenty twenty-three, exploring the following options. The existing two-part tariff versus the nine hundred kiloliter allocation option. The option to pre-purchase, sorry, it shouldn't be versus, having a choice. Sorry, it's existing two-part tariffs. And, is that versus? I didn't put versus. I just realised that's versus. Sorry, it says versus, but it-
It just means weighing up both options. That just means weighing up both options.
No, no, the actual motion was to, sorry, I didn't realise it was versus. It was actually to give people to have the existing two-part tariff or have the option for a nine hundred kiloliter allowance. So to have a choice. And then part two of that was the option. So the first one is not one or the other. It's to explore the option of giving people a choice of either staying on the two-part tariff or moving to a nine hundred kiloliter option. So you've got the choice like Townsville and Wit Sundays. And number two is also have the option to pre-purchase an additional water allocation. And this would be a choice of a further amount of kilolitres allocation at a cost to be determined by council. Can I get a second of that motion?
Coghlan, I mean McCrae.
Believe me, you don't want to live my life.
Swap those, swap those.
Thank you, councillor McCrae. Yeah, I'll just start talking to this one. So all this means is it's not a commitment by council in any shape or form. It's to explore if Mount Isa City Council can offer residents to do some, what Townsville and Wit Sundays and a few other councils around Queensland are already doing, is giving residents the option of how they want to pay for water, which is either to stay on the existing two-part tariff, which some people are definitely happy to be on, or change to the nine hundred kiloliter allocation. What the councils do well is you can go onto their website and you can put in, last year I used eight hundred and fifty kilolitres, and it calculates, well, if you stay on this two-part tariff, you'll pay this much. But if you went to an allocation, you paid this much. So you can actually pick the better option for you financially. What the councils do is once you pick it, you're locked in for that financial year. And if it doesn't work out a good decision for you, you can change it at the end of that year. So you can't swap in the middle, but you can swap at the end. The other part, and this has been very successful. And when I talked to the mayor of Wit Sundays, Andrew Wilcox, who's now gone on to become a member of Queensland, he said that, you know, it ended all the election debate on water because they were one of the councils that amalgamated and they had areas which were very dry and then they had areas which got a lot of water. And he said, not only did they go on to, you know, it didn't become an election issue anymore. He said that they didn't lose any money as a council, they actually made more money as a council. And when I queried how that was to happen, he said it's just the simple fact that people who go on a two-part tariff think they may be water-wise and in the end, maybe they're not. And people who go for an allocation think they'll use it and then maybe they don't use it. So he said, one of the things they were worried about as a council is the back-end work that comes with it. And he said it turned out to be not too hard to do. He said they have all the information we need as a council and they would be happy to provide it. Townsville do a very similar thing as well with offering a choice on how to pay for water. And the other part to this was, at the moment, you've got families that are definitely using way over the nine hundred kilolitres. So if they know that they're already going to twelve hundred kilolitres and they had an option to buy extra water, that would put less stress on that family because once it gets over the nine hundred kilolitres, it jumps to three dollars a kiloliter, which is, you know, some people's bills are really blowing out. And I think these would really help some families in Mount Isa. It would really go a long way to encouraging, you know, families to grow their gardens, have a lawn, look after their houses. And at the moment, sometimes under a two-part tariff, people are very conscious that as soon as you turn the tap off, it's eighty-seven cents a kiloliter coming through. So that's basically the proposal. It's not a commitment to do it. It's just for the council to look at the, what the costs involved, what the impact would be on council and also benchmark with another council perhaps on how to work. I had a chance to talk to the infrastructure director right at the beginning when I got in. And he said to me, you need to wait for the smart meters to get in because once the smart meters get in, that will make the back-end work very easy to do. And this should be a simple thing to implement. So that's what I'm putting up. Again, I just want to stress because I know in our informal briefing, there was, I felt like people thought I was putting up the choice now and maybe that I'm wrong with that. But it's definitely just for council to put a report to an ordinary meeting on that. And obviously, I expect with that, there'll be some workshops in the background on what it meant to council financially, what the impact would be on rate payers and understanding the full impact of offering a choice to residents. So councillor McCrae, you second it, so I'll ask you if you wanted to comment on this one?
I guess I could. I'm just wondering why it's been brought to the ordinary in this fashion because you can get this brought up through the briefing process or the workshops. A couple of things. I guess water is not an unlimited resource. So it does get dearer after the nine hundred kilolitres because obviously we want people to conserve water because the last thing we want is to be getting short of water. Like, we have had a good seven years, but in the cycle, we're about to move into drier times. So we just need to be a bit conscious of that. Also, I note in there Bowen is listed as the place that was very dry. I had a look. Bowen actually gets eight hundred and fifty-six millimetres of rain a year. Mount Isa gets three hundred and ninety-six. So even though Bowen is listed as a dry example there, it gets twice, more than twice the rainfall that Mount Isa actually does. So I think we're comparing apples and oranges there. And I'm yet to understand how everyone can pay less but still be able to pay the bill to the water board. I just don't believe maths works that way. That's my comment. But I'm happy to investigate.
Any other comments, councillors?
Yes, through the chair. I don't think the motion's going to, I'll have to ask for the CEO's help with this matter. I don't think this motion's going to get passed, but I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion if I could. So my amendment to the motion is that council investigates providing options for water charging and allocations in the form of a report to council when twelve months of full data from smart meters are complete, exploring the following options. Existing two-part tariff versus the nine hundred kilometre allocation option. Option to pre-purchase additional water allocation. This would be a choice of a further amount of kilolitres versus allocation at a cost to be determined by council. That would be the motion I'd like to put on the board. Madam Mayor, you've-
Do we vote on the first option first before we amend it? We don't have to wait for the first one to be put forward? Yeah, sorry, I'll just check.
Madam Mayor, you answered one of my questions and it was on that we haven't seen any evidence from the Wit Sundays, as far as a report goes or whatever, but you said that they'd quite willing to-
Can you read that amendment again?
Okay. Motion. That council investigates providing options for water charging and allocations in the form of a report to council when twelve months of full data from smart meters are complete. So this isn't in the motion, but all I'm saying is that we need twelve months of complete data from the smart meters. It was said to us on Wednesday that there's still thirteen hundred outstanding that haven't been put in. So when all the smart meters are in, we've got twelve months of complete data. That's when we need to do the report.
Can I follow up on that motion? What data do you think we require to implement this?
Well, it's been told to us that the smart meters are more accurate. So, and we spent a lot of money as Mount Isa City Council putting these smart meters in. It's been a long process. I think we need to get them in place, get the data, so the data is correct.
But what about if the report in November, if we let it come to council, explains that we don't need the data?
No, you need the data.
Because you could actually sit tight for twelve months.
No, it would be a waste of time, Madam Mayor, to put the smart, like, why did we go to all the trouble of putting the smart meters in?
Can I just finish my sentence and I'll give you time to reply? So if we let the report go up in November, it may, and probably will say that we don't need twelve months of data. So we could lose a year because you're speculating that we need twelve months of data. But if we let that report go up in November, it could tell us, yes, you need twelve months of data. Or it could tell us, actually, you don't need twelve months of data and these are the reasons why. So to sit back and wait a year without really understanding if we need the data is a waste of time in my view. But I'll hand over to you.
Yeah, I don't believe that's correct. And my motion's on the board, I've basically said why I want, I want twelve months of data from the smart meters. We were sold, we were told time and time again that they are more accurate than what's going on now. So I've put my motion up, I've put the amendment to the motion, I'll just stick to that.
Any other councillors like to discuss councillor Coghlan's motion?
Through the chair, I would. I think it's part, I think from time to time, a review of our water rating methodology-
Point of order. Sorry, councillor, you need to, that amendment needs to be seconded.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, that was my mistake. Sorry, thank you for that. Can I get a second of councillor Coghlan's motion?
I'll second that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fortune.
So the motion's on the board, I'll second it. You know, like I said, reviews of our water rating methodologies need to be done from time to time. So I think that once the due diligence is exercised, and that includes having that data from all of our smart meters, we were told as recently as Wednesday, there's thirteen hundred yet to be installed. That data informs decision-making and that is due diligence. Sitting around is not an option. Waiting for correct data to make informed decisions is, that is an option. There's a conflict, I guess, in the rationale that is on the documentation, that there's a statement there that now that all the smart meters are in place and that is technically not correct from what I heard on Wednesday. Councillors have been told there's somewhere between a thousand and thirteen hundred metres still to be connected. And we've also been told that there should be sufficient data after twelve months of smart meter installation to make an informed decision. Also, in your statement of rationale on our meeting documentation, there's a statement there where you said that the council will make money and that the Wit Sunday had made money. And I'd like to ask if there's a, I'll get an explanation, I guess, of what that means. Will our rate payers be paying more for water? Or are the council's responsibility to maintain our water infrastructure network, will that be diminished? That's a question I have. And I'd also like to support the issue of where we are. Mount Isa's average rainfall is three hundred and ninety-six millimetres per annum. The Wit Sundays is one thousand five hundred and fifty-three millimetres. Now Wit Sundays is on the coast. Bowen is eight hundred and fifty-six. And Collinsville, which is in the west of that local government area, is the lowest on five hundred and ninety-nine, which is a difference of two hundred and three millimetres to Mount Isa. So on average, that whole area is roughly nine hundred and sixty-five millimetres more, which is three times more than Mount Isa City Council's local average. So we need to be very careful. Like I say, reviews from time to time need to be done. We have a different payment method to that council, to that regional council. There's a figure we have to pay by contract to the Mount Isa Water Board. And there's true-up figures- And there's true-up figures after that depending on how much we would have used or, or don't use. But, uh, that figure is a, um, is a substantial figure that, uh, council need to be aware of and also, uh, uh, reconcile through our rates, uh, so that we can pay those bills and maintain our infrastructure into the future. So, um, part of that maintaining of, uh, infrastructure is having correct data. Um, and I believe that due diligence will be exercised after twelve metres from the date that all of our smart meters are installed.
Uh, would you like me to answer those ones that you had?
Yes, please.
Yep. So let's start with thirteen hundred metres. Um, as stated on Wednesday, those meters will, are expected to be in before the end of the year. So again, by November, we're going to have most of those meters in. By the time we're even, uh, looking at any decisions, the meters will mostly be in. Um, the, the, the water making money. So maybe I didn't explain it well when I put the motion forward, but I'll explain it again. So what the Whitsundays found, and keep in mind Townsville do this as well and Townsville have dry spells as well. So you've only looked at one council, but quite a few councils offer this around Queensland. But, um, what happens is someone like me who wants to be maybe on an allocation thinks I'm going to use nine hundred kilolitres. But then I might only use four hundred. So actually I've paid for water I didn't use. That's where the council makes money. Then there's someone like yourself who thinks, well, I'm very water smart. I'm gonna, um, stick to, uh, the two-part tariff. But then you have a bad year of the pool, it's damaged and you have to refill it a couple of times or whatever it is. And all of a sudden you've, you've spent, you've had twelve hundred kilolitres of water usage and you've got this huge bill. And that's where they have, that's why they haven't lost money implementing this. And that's why they don't need statistics on what the overall consumption rate is per user. But again, if we took this to, if we let the council bring a report to us in November, they would be able to tell you, yes, we do recommend you wait a year, or no, we recommend, we don't need that, we don't need that data after talking to, to quite a few councils. It's not data we need. At the moment, there's speculation that we need the data. I haven't personally been told we need that data and I'm told, I'm told on, on the highest authority that we are charging the right amount for water to every resident. We're not charging wrong amounts. The smart meters, what they will do is stop us having to send someone to your door and check what you've used and write it down. The smart meters will automatically send that information to us. The, the way that we will see a difference in data is that if anyone has been cheating the system with a, a magnet or however, and we don't know how big or little that is, that may give us some extra dollars. But, um, with regard to water usage, Mount Isa City Council, um, with regard to, sorry, the Lake Mundara. Lake Mundara evaporates at a very high rate and it evaporates more than we can use as a city. So whether we are using water or not, it is evaporating. It's a very low-lying lake that's very spread out. And that's why Lake Julius is, is a great lake because it's very deep and it stays at capacity for years because it is, it doesn't evaporate like, like Mundara does. So again, I know we're talking apples and pears when it comes to other places. But there are cities and towns that offer a two-part tariff which are a lot drier as well. So again, if we allow the data to come up to us in November, we're not wasting it twelve months sitting around speculating if we need the data. And, and again, no one has formally said we need twelve months of data. Um, did I miss anything? Yeah, but the, the, the data we have, I'm told is correct. We, we are not charging residents the wrong mon- the wrong rate on water. It is correct. So we're not, um, when they say reliable, really old meters tend to run at a, um, at a loss to council. And when the new meters come in, you might find people are back on the right track and maybe paying a little bit extra. But that's about it as far as I know. And I don't know if there's any council officers want to chime in on the, the, that information?
No, I, I wasn't implying that council was paying the, or, or charging the wrong rate. I'm, I'm saying that the data from our smart meters would be a lot more accurate.
Thank you.
That's my point.
Councillor McCrae, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. I just guess, um, in the past, we've assumed that the water that is not being paid for has lost, been lost through leaks. But with the smart meter installation, it's highlighted that a lot of people have been diverting meters, cheating the system. Um, and once all those people are bought online, it may be the case that water is cheaper for everybody. Um, because the people that haven't been paying will actually be paying for the water that they're using. So I think, um, actual data would be, in, in any situation, decision-making is always best informed by data in my opinion.
I, I, I think there's a good argument to say that even if we save money with the smart meters, we, we won't be reducing the cost of water. Is that a safe argument if you came back now? Because we still have to pay the bulk water to the water board. So at the end of the day, we, we still have to pay twelve million dollars. So we, we can't say, well, now we can reduce the cost of water because we need what we get to pay the twelve million dollars. And as councillor Fortune said, replace vital infrastructure that's aging in there. Any other comments on this before we vote?
Wasn't the water loss about thirty percent?
Thirty-six percent.
Thirty-six percent. So I, I guess maybe six percent could be down to leaks. Maybe if it's thirty percent, that, that's a substantial amount.
Ma- Mount Isa City Council was already losing quite considerable lot of money before you brought in the two-part tariff. So we've had investigators come, as you, as you all know, to come and, and they've looked at where the leaks could be. There's a very good argument that we've got water in the river now, especially on Rhine Road all year round. When, you know, historically, when we were all kids, it didn't have water in there. So there, you know, it's, it is interesting where this water is missing from. And, you know, most councils accept twelve to sixteen percent water loss. So we're probably double.
So I, I understand that, um, through our, um, through our operations, that we're, um, going through a, um, a methodical replacement of our mains, uh, our mains valves. Um, there are also other issues with, uh, the services directly to, um, residential. Um, that is an ongoing cost to council and, uh, identifying exactly, um, where those losses are will come through the elimination, um, of those, of the possible leaks through valves. I mean, we've got a replacement program ongoing and a mains replacement ongoing. And we're also, um, uh, attending to those services that are leaking. So we'll have a, a much better idea, um, once we get further down the track with, with those, um, mains replacements, valves replacements. Um, and also using that data, uh, through the residential's that will indicate where our losses are, uh, in our system. And, um, uh, part of that methodology, I believe, is having meters, um, on our mains around town. So in conjunction with our me- meters around town and the residential's, we'll be able to identify where the losses are and target those areas. So, um, you know, the thirty, thirty-six percent, whatever the figure is, is, is too high. I mean, there's a, 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 a percentage that is acceptable of losses and, uh, I believe that's around ten percent. But, uh, yeah, anything around thirty percent is not acceptable. And, uh, having that data from the residential's would further inform us on where we need to, um, place our resources, I guess, to, uh, reduce those losses.
Anyone else have any comments?
We're still talking to the amendment at the moment?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, look, I, I, I agree with, um, councillor Coglan and councillor Fortune's assessment of the situation. Um, I, um, I think the thing that we probably need to be really careful of is, is getting legal advice on this. Um, we, uh, we used to have an allocation once and only an allocation. We had fifteen hundred kilolitres, a massive fifteen hundred kilolitres per resident. Uh, that dropped to twelve, um, twelve hundred kilolitres and then down to a thousand, um, around about probably in the early two thousands or later two thousands. Um, and then, um, we, uh, we received out of the blue a challenge to the way we were charging for water by a local entity. Um, and, um, subsequently that went through a series of court cases. Um, and it was a great lot of heartache to our council and it was also set other councils on notice about, um, um, the potential changes to the water charging methodology right through the state. Um, we eventually won that after costing the rate payers, um, hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend the situation. Um, and, um, I, I think, um, we can't move on any of this stuff unless we get some really, really good legal advice. And I, I would like to extend the amendment that, if we can have an amendment on an amendment, um, for, for the councillor Coglan's, that, that suitable legal advice is obtained. Because we don't want to set ourselves up for a situation where we were subsequently, where we thought we were perfectly safe with the water allocation in the past and then it turns out we may not have been. Um, and then that was the reason that I asked, uh, when this first was raised, that we could get a lot more, a lot more information concerning this issue. Put onto the, um, put onto the, the notice of motion, uh, which was subsequently not, not followed up. Um, that may come out in a report later on. I get that. But I think this, this rationale is very light on, um, in terms of the information that we've got for us to make a decision here today. And I think that certainly that, um, having twelve months' data, having legal advice, uh, would be, um, would be far more appropriate for us as a council to make a decision because we don't want to put ourselves into a situation that we had and the heartache that we went through in two thousand seventeen, whenever that, um, challenge was.
I don't, the council is just, I don't think you're going to move under your standing orders. I don't think-
That's okay. Um.
But can I just say through the chair to you councillor Barwick, like, all I'm asking for here is a report. And then once the report is put to council, I'm sure council will then be able to seek legal advice to make sure that it is correct.
Yeah, and, um, so-
Are you changing the amendment you put?
No, no, no.
Um, I can't see anything on, uh, what does it say you can put amendment up?
You just do.
We're not wanting legal advice added?
No, I don't think you're saying that. It's just that you can't amend an amendment. But I mean, but if you're asking for a report, I mean, generally speaking, that would, that would, would, you know, fire us to get some legal advice.
Uh, uh, obviously that would be, um, if that was a concern to you councillor, I can't see why no one would go and get legal advice. Although you've got councils all over Queensland offering this, this choice. So if, I don't think we're doing anything new.
They were offering an allocation too, if you recall, um, at the time that we were challenged. Um, and, um, yeah, so I, I would be very, you know, I would not, uh, proceed to support any of this unless we got some really secure legal advice um, on, on what we're doing, um, because, um, we've been-
You're saying that there's councils at the moment that may be operating, um?
There was, as I said before, um, I don't want to repeat myself too much, but, um, we were on an allocation which everybody in Queensland thought was a safe charging methodology until it was challenged against Mount Isa City Council in court in two thousand and seventeen, I believe it was. And, uh, the council here went through a lot of heartache, um, being challenged by a local entity, um, to, um, to, uh, you know, that we may be charging incorrectly. And I asked for the, for the background, for the lead-up into this motion being posted, um, so that that, um, councillors could have a full understanding that may not have been around at the time on, um, why we are where we are. Um, and the, as I said, the, this rationale was very, very light on. There's some innuendo from the mayor of Whitsundays, which you can take it or leave it. Um, there's also an indication there that, that we stand to make money out of this and I'm not going to support anything that's going to charge the rate payers any more money for their water.
Councillor, councillor, you're going to be out of order here because that's not what it says. Please, please-
No, I said there's an indication in there.
No, no indication at all. It's just saying basically that what the, what happened to the Whitsundays. Please don't put, um, change what the wording is, councillor.
I'm not changing the wording.
I'm cautioning you. That's not what it says.
I accept what you're saying, but I'm just reading from the motion here, the rationale. You said they actually made money.
They, I didn't say we were going to make money. I just-
Yeah, but you said they actually made money.
I'm cautioning you councillor, don't change the wording.
There's an indication in-
No, there's no indication. I'm talking what happened at the Whitsundays in a conversation.
Well, as I said, the rationale here is very light on, uh, trying to support this motion for change. Um, I don't see anything in there that would, that would, um, support my voting for a change in this. Um, I'm happy to put it through to report based on councillor Coglan's, um, amendment. And because I know full well the heartache that the council went through, um, when we were challenged back in two thousand and seventeen by an entity, local entity.
Well, can I, can I, oh, sorry.
I was just going to add, um, basically when an officer does a report at any rate, you, you would notice in that that we do consider all legal risks and insurance and things like that. That would be-
Yeah, I, I would like to, thanks, um, Mr. CEO and I, I respect that and I understand that happens, but I would-
And can I just, you've actually had your chance to-
No, no, don't stop me please. I'm not finished.
No, no, we, we, we finished review. We went to the CEO. Now I'm, I'm going to reply to what you said and then you can answer that if you want to. I'll give you that opportunity.
Thank you.
The, the rationale is behind us investigating, giving residents of Mount Isa an option of how they want to pay for water, whether they want to stay on a two-part tariff or go to an allocation. The, the rationale, the motion is asking for council to investigate if this is a viable option for Mount Isa City Council and the residents of Mount Isa. And I want all the legal advice. I want you to have all the information in front of you so you can make an informed decision. I certainly don't want Mount Isa City Council to lose money. I don't want rate payers to pay one cent more than they have to. I want this to be a good option for residents so that they feel comfortable watering their gardens and they're not worried about the financial impact. Um, I have not said this is an opportunity for council to make money. And, um, I know you can read things and interpret them the way you want, but that's just exactly what you just did then. It's not written there that Mount Isa City Council will make money. Or, and when we talked about this at the informal briefing, which became more of a discussion and a debate than it should have been, um, I highlighted that this was just to put you on notice that I would like a report. That's all it is. Um, I don't want to blind sign you with asking reports to go up to council that you don't know about. I wanted to put you on notice that I would like a report. Um, I did talk to the infrastructure director and say to him, and he wasn't the infrastructure director at the time, you know, how, this is what my vision is in the future. How do we make this work with the smart meters? So I, um, again, I believe that with this motion, why can't you, um, amend it so that you can get advice from the, um, a qualified officer at council if you need twelve months of data? Because at the moment, you haven't got advice on that. You can say you've heard it, but I certainly didn't hear it and I've had many, many conversations about this. So why can't you get advice from a qualified officer of council on whether you need twelve months of data? Because at the moment, you're speculating and you're going to waste twelve months of rate payers' time and money just on something you think you heard, which I didn't hear, where there's nothing in writing to back up this, this. And we can very easily get confirmation if you need twelve months of data. All right, councillor, um, I, I offered you a right of reply. And please refrain from rewording what's here.
As I indicated, madam mayor, um, I, I agree with the other councillors and I know what we all heard at the briefing from the director that, um, we, he suggested that twelve months of data would be the wisest way to go. So I'll, I'll stick with that. Sorry.
The director wasn't at the briefing. We had the acting director at the briefing and he did not comment. You might, no, no, let me finish speaking. Sorry.
Just that one.
I'll come to you. I'm, I'm just saying, you're talking about a maybe a, a workshop because-
Prior meetings, yes, that's right.
Prior meetings. Cause briefings obviously are about what's in the agenda items.
That's what we all heard. That's what I'm-
Yeah. So you're saying a cup, a couple of months ago or a couple of years ago?
No, no, in recent times, yeah.
No, we have, I'm saying that that hasn't happened. He has very steadfastly said that to me, the best-
All I know is you've got a few councillors here saying it happened. So I'll just leave it at that, please.
Well, why are, why are you?
But what I'm saying is this, this rationale is very light on, okay? Um, there's, um, look, you've got references in here to, uh-
I've, I've cautioned you on re-
No, I can read your rationale. I'm just saying you're offering rate payers a choice of how they want to pay for water. And then, um, i- is it clear that we're talking about all rate payers here? We talking about commercial? We talking about businesses?
This is why I want a report to go to council. We've, we've qualified people to look at what our options are. And, and if we get a report to council, they'll be able to say, look, this, this is going to work very well for rate payers. It may actually, um, e- explain all the challenges. It'll explain all the opportunities.
I, I get that.
But at the moment, you're, you're, if you vote against this, you're saying that you don't want that information. And that's all it is. I'm, I'm just- And that's all it is, I'm, I'm just saying, this is the reason why I want to put this up is because I think we can make this work.
You've heard from that.
If we got the, can I just finish one thing?
Sure, sure.
Um, that's all, and, and you've heard this rationale from me since day one, it's not new information to you.
Well, no, not really, not, not the first time I've seen this rationale, but.
Well, I've, I've explained.
I have heard you indicate about change.
Can I call a point of order here? Please, and I, I've got an amendment on the board, this is just going into a discussion. Um, I've got an amendment to the motion on the board and I'd like it voted on.
Is there any more councillors, thank you for your comment, is there any more councillors who'd like to talk about this motion, amendment?
Well, I just wanted to clear up one more point, which I was coming to, um, it, it talks about ratepayers and then it talks about residents down below, does this refer to commercial ratepayers as well? Is what I want to know.
We'd investigate all options, all options, all opportunities and all challenges. And that's, and, and there's a lot of questions here, which is a shame because you're obviously going to vote for not getting a full understanding if you need twelve months of data. Councillor, I will, after this, I will find out if we need twelve months of data and if you guys are wrong, I'll bring it to another council meeting. Handing over, all those in favour of councillor Coghlan's mo- motion.
Through the chair.
It's, it's over now, all those in favour of councillor Coglan's amendment to the motion.
Through the chair, I, I haven't read, finished, I, I seconded my motion, I seconded the motion and there's an.
I've asked three times, did any other councillors have anything else to say councillor and you didn't speak up?
I was waiting for.
All those in favour of councillor Coghlan's amended motion.
Point of order through the chair, is, is this normal meeting procedure?
No, well councillor Coghlan's, I believe, has asked for the motion to be put, which is, which is a procedural motion and it's got to be voted on if you move in a procedural motion.
I'd just like it voted on because I think we're just discussing now, so it needs to be voted on, is everyone clear on the amendment?
Well, I'm clear on the amendment, but there's implication that I, I don't support any, um, changes.
No, no councillor.
Or you made those comments.
Councillor, we're voting now. We, you, you, you didn't speak up when I offered the opportunity three times.
Just, just to clarify, you are voting on an amendment?
Yes.
Once the amendment is passed and it becomes a motion, you can have another debate, but the amendment's got to be put.
All right, all those in favour for councillor Coghlan's amended motion. Councillor Tully, and can, can you, uh, do a division there and have my? Thank you. So the amendment's now the motion, councillors, all those in favour?
Sorry, I can speak to that motion, can't I, through the chair? Yes, I can speak to that motion, so the implication there is that the council, by moving this amendment, isn't. Wanting our water rating methodology investigated. I said at the beginning that every now and then.
No, what, what implication, sorry councillor.
Through the chair, can I, can I finish?
I just didn't hear that.
Can, can I, can I finish? Can I finish?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, so the recording is there from the beginning of the meeting where I said, uh, I support. Reviews of our water rating methodology and the statements that come out have indicated that, uh, I'm not. Willing to change, well, I put on record that the data is the information we need. That is my recollection, it, it certainly isn't yours, you've stated that. Um, and if you would like to ask all the other councils, i- if that's their recollection, you could get, uh, their opinion. But my recollection is that once all of the water meters, the smart meters were installed, we'd have sufficient data to make valid decision making. So, uh, that's due diligence to me. And to suggest that I'm not following, uh, my role as a councillor to exercise due diligence, I, um, reject that. Um, that was the implication, uh, and I reject it, so, um, I supported the motion, I seconded the motion. And, uh, I'm on record as saying that I. That I would like, or it's, it's good to see, uh, reviews from time to time, but you do need the data and, uh. My recollection is.
Councillor.
I'm the council officer, sorry, sorry, I'm not finished. My recollection from the council officer was that once the smart meters are in, and that means all of them. After twelve months, we'd have the data, sufficient data to make valid decisions.
Councillor, I think you should go back and watch the live stream, I haven't, you've insinuated, I've said things that just didn't get said.
Okay, so, uh.
I didn't say that, I didn't say anything about, um.
The implication was that I didn't support because I didn't want to change and I.
Did, did I say that?
I'm going to make the point that change needs to.
Did I actually say that, or, or did you?
Well, it was, it was, sorry, if you didn't mean that, that's fine, that's fine.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that at all.
All right, if that's, wasn't implication, that's fine, so I'm understanding by my, um.
I think what, sometimes what, you know, when you hear words, sometimes you think that they're saying this, but I actually physically didn't say it.
If I misunderstood, Chair, I apologise.
No, that's fine, and, and that's why I just wanted to reiterate when I heard you say those things. It, it, that, those words never left my lips, I never said any of that stuff, what I did say was.
Apology stands.
Thank you, appreciate that. Well, some good debate councillors, um. We've got a motion on the books before, I just want to make one offer before we close, is there any other councillors who didn't get to say what they wanted to say?
Yeah, I'd just like to continue where I was before, if I can, Madam Mayor, um, the, um, the legal advice that we seek in nature to this, in relationship to this. Uh, should be very, very, um, particular and targeted, it shouldn't be just a general advice. Um, because, um, as I said, it was a, a significant, um, cost to council back in two thousand seventeen when we were challenged on the, on the, uh, water allocation. Now, who would have thought? However, it was, it was challenged and, um, and we went through a lot of legal argument and, uh, court cases to, to defend it. And, uh, I don't want to make, I want to make sure council doesn't get put into that position. Um, and the more I think about this, Madam Mayor, I, I think, um, you, you may need to have a, have a look and consider whether you have a conflict of interest in this. Raising this motion as well because of your, um, your position with the, with the entity that I've mentioned. Um, and I think perhaps you, you probably do need to consider that from here on in.
I think you've brought in a, a, an argument that has no relation to what I've brought up. And then you're trying to say I've got a conflict of interest, so councillor, I caution you on bringing up history that has nothing to do with what we're talking about. I'm offering a report to go up to council with workshops, with a lot of information about should we offer residents. The option to have a two-part tariff or an allocation. You going into history where I was not involved with personally, this is your, and this is your, I don't know. What you're talking about in regard to that history for you, and I'm sorry you've had a difficult time in the last, um. Term, that is nothing to do with what's happening here right now. This is just about offering residents, residents a choice on how they pay for water. So if you're trying to sideways come in and, and, and indicate that I have a conflict of interest because of something you did during your term, has nothing to do with me. All right, I think we've all had a lot to say, I think there was, uh, some debate. Uh, all those in favour for the motion that's on the table?
Is that the second one?
The amended motion.
Yeah, so the amendment is now the motion.
Voted for the amendment, now we're voting for the motion.
Yeah, and, and that's why, why councillor put your hand up, I say. Um, can we have a division there and, and have my vote counted as against? Well, thank you councillors, um, let's move on because we've got a, 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 a bigger gender in front of us. That brings us to item twelve, which is twelve point one, which is the finance overview report for August twenty twenty-three, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, thanks that council receives and accepts the August two thousand and twenty-three finance overview report.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Stratten.
Thank you councillor Stratten, um, councillor Barwick, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, um, so the, um, uh, figures that are there are presented for, um, July and August year to date. Um, which are, um, showing that mostly we're in line with budget at this point in time, um. There's, um, uh. Some information there around, um, the capital and the plant and also we've got the rates arrears sitting at, um. Seven thousand, seven hundred and, uh, sorry, seven million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, um, outstanding at the moment. And, um, as we'll see, um, later today, there are moves afoot to, um, reduce some of those, um, really outstanding, um. Over, over three years, um, arrears, um, which is sitting at three point eight million at the moment, um, which is good to see. The quarter four, um, non-residential and second year half residential water consumption readings have been finalised now, so those notices, um. Uh, will go out for the periods, um, uh, first of April to the thirtieth of six twenty-three. And residential properties, um, they were issued on the eleventh of August during the period. Um, so they're all due for payment around about now, the tenth of, uh, September, just gone. Uh, the issue date for rates notices is, uh, at the present time is fifteenth of September, um, which is today, coincidentally. And, uh, the, um, um, there is, uh. Just a bit of a, a question mark over that because of our transition to the new, um, um. Electronic system, but, um, the administration system that we're using, but however, I believe it's all in, um, progress. And the status is quite good at the moment, so they should go out on time. Um, and the borrowings, uh, once again, we've paid down now to seventeen point two million, um, is the outstanding borrowings. Um, and I'll just, um, uh, there's no borrowings being added, um, this term. Uh, to that, that's, so we're just paying around debt from previous terms. And, um, yeah, their cash balance is, uh, once again quite healthy, remaining at a, a very high level, close to fifty million. Um, so that keeps us substantially strong in terms of finances, thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Fortune, will you, you second?
No, I didn't.
Oh, sorry councillor Stratten. Okay, any other councillors with any comments on this one? Okay, let's vote on this one, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item twelve point two, which is the Mount Isa Christmas and New Year closure, uh, closed down, I should say, for twenty-three, twenty-four. I can't believe we're actually talking about Christmas, um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Would, I'd like to move that council support closing the administration office, library, works depot, batch plant and material sales office. From closer business from twelve to the twenty, Friday twenty-second of December twenty twenty-three. Open on Tuesday, the second of January twenty twenty-four, on the following grounds. Archer, departments that deliver essential services, i.e. waste management, water and sewer infrastructure services. Will have skeleton crews rostered on and on-call over the Christmas, New Year period to cover any emergencies and to provide essential services to the city. Directors to determine sufficient, sus- sufficient support staff to be rostered. Skeleton crew as required, other than statutory holidays, time taken off by staff during this period will be either flex time, RDO, annual leave or a combination of both. Appropriate advertising be arranged.
Thank you, can I have a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor McCrae, any comments on this?
Um, no, we, this is pretty much standard, we do this each year and it seems to work well.
Thank you, councillor Fortune?
Yes, it is standard through the chair and, um, it's a traditional thing for, um, Mount Isa City Council and operationally it's been managed very well with that skeleton staff. And through the background there, you can see that, you know, it, it offers the, um, uh, employees time with their families and friends over, um, the Christmas, New Year period.
Thank you, any other councillors with any other comments before we vote? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us through to, uh, our community services reports, thirteen point one, which is the splashes overview report for August twenty twenty-three. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'll move the recommendation that council receives and accepts the August twenty twenty-three splashes overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae, councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, just with the report, we've gone back into, uh, summer training hours on the fourth of September. And, uh, there's a full program with a lot of, uh, swimming lessons, swimming carnivals. I would say we've got Good Shepherd Swimming Carnival today, so go Benjamin House, want to be champions again. Um, the other thing I would like, um. Maybe a report or just to put it on notice, I do know that the schools offer the life-saving courses. Part of, um, both high schools, they, they do that, but I just would like to see if we could get a report. Or if we could liaise with the splashes, uh, management. If we could offer maybe a life-saving course to members of the public to go through, like how we could go through that. Because I know, um, there could be people out there that would like to do it and, um, I'd just like to explore the options, that's all.
My, my brother is actually a qualified, um, swimming instructor who can actually do the bronze medallions and all the other credentials. But it's whether we've got them in town at the moment and, uh, he's, but, uh, I think that's a great idea councillor.
Well, it just, you know, like there might be people out there that, that do want to explore it, so if, um, if the CEO could take that on notice. Thank you. And that's all I've got.
Any other questions councillors? Oh, we've got, all right, we lost councillor Tully for a second.
I still want the toilet.
I don't know what you're doing.
Absent?
Councillor Tully?
He's doing something under the desk. We might note him as absent. Put him as absent.
Absent, okay, all right. I didn't see him go either, um. Might be emergency. Ten oh seven? Okay, uh, so councillor Tully has left the men- meeting ten oh seven, um, we're just about to vote on, um. The thirteen point one splashes overview report, uh, councillors, all those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us through to item thirteen point two, which is the economic development overview report for August twenty twenty-three.
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the August twenty twenty-three economic development overview report.
Thank you councillor McCrae, can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you councillor Barwick, councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yeah, I would just like to talk to the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee, we had, um, a meeting on Thursday, the thirty-first of August. Um, and it was a really, um, productive meeting with Mount Isa Water Board. Indicating that they're, um, just about completing a five-year strategy for Lake Mundara that's going to be going out for consultation and they're. Happy to work with the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee on that, so we've made a commitment to, um, meet with them next month to give feedback. Yeah, so that's really productive on behalf of that committee, I don't know if, um, anyone wants to comment on the mine workers or the motorsports.
Thank you councillor McCrae.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, um, so, um, the motorsports advisory committee haven't met, um, just yet, however, we've just recently received back the final report from GHD. Which is, um, being worked on by council officers and also the committee are having a look at it now, so. We expect to have a meeting, um, just on the feasibility study, um, and the results of that, um, in a short time. Um, I'll just make a note too that, um, uh, on the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee that, um. Uh, the Mount Isa Water Board are completing a five-year strategy for the lake, so I think, um, it, it's, um. It's good that Mount Isa City Council could be in on that earlier, sorry, yeah, but, um, I, I just think it's something that we need to, um. Um, yeah, be really, really involved with because that can be a really, a really good, um, um, iconic, um, you know, um. Uh, scenic sort of a place out there with all those, uh, things that if they're added in and if the, um. If the advisory committee plans get involved in and connected with the, um, the Mount Isa Water Board strategy as well. Um.
Can I just ask through the chair to the deputy, why is it, why, I get a lot of, um, people in the community, why is it taking so long with the motorsports complex?
Well, um, I, I, I think this is one stage of it, is the feasibility study and, um, it went back to the committee and then we wanted to make a few adjustments, amendments and. Get them to have a look at a few more things, so it went back to the, um, to the, uh, engineers again, um, and which they did and they've put in a final report now, so, um. It has taken a long time, yeah, I, um, I, I can't give you the exact reasons for that, but it's, um, it's actually, um, it is, it is finalized now and that's the main thing. But I do want to say that this is only the first step in a, in a long, long process, so if you're expecting a motorsport complex next year, then. You might, don't hold your breath because, um, we have to do, uh, a few things like a cultural survey, we have to do an environmental impact study. Um, we have to also, uh, work out the, um, trajectory of how we're going to deliver this, um, and whether it's a, a stage process. Or, um, whether we go for a complete. Um, and whether it's a, a stage process or, um, whether we go for a complete swag of funding, you know, to build it. Um, and then we've got, in amongst all that, we've got to look at the viability of it, um, so that council, council doesn't get lumbered with something that they have to support forever and a day. And, um, that it, it is, uh, something that can stand up by itself. So it, it's a, it, it will be quite a long process.
Okay. And just through the chair, on the miners' memorial committee, it's got in there about, um, Frank Aston Hill, but there's nothing in there about George McCoy Park, but we are doing a design for George McCoy Park? Yep, okay, no worries, I'm just checking.
Can I just, um, flag the miners' memorial committee? Um, a, a big shout out to John Moran and Steve Trevor. Um, without them, we probably wouldn't have a miners' memorial committee. And not only have they been instrumental in getting that up and running, but I know they reached out to the state government and on Tuesday, the nineteenth of September, Mount Isa will be hosting the state's miners' memorial, um, in, at the civic centre. Um, we're going to have a delegation come from all around the state, from the mining resource communities, uh, governments. And I know that they were instrumental in pushing that to happen in a hundred years. So thank you for that, uh, to them and the committee. And, and one of the things that I'm really impressed about is that we have four members on that committee who are ex-Mount Isa people who don't live here. But every time we hold a committee meeting, they fly in at their own expense to attend, which I think is absolutely fantastic and it shows just how, um, they're not the Mount Isa people, whether they're ex-Mount Isas or current Mount Isas love this city. So I just want to, um, put out there to, if anyone's, um, watching this now, is please come along to, uh, the miners' memorial on Tuesday, take some time off work if you have to. It kicks off at ten-thirty, so if you can get here by ten, um, it, it is quite an honour to be hosting this. And as, uh, you may or may not know, but in nineteen twenty-one, seventy-five coal miners were killed in Mount Mulligan. And, uh, that's the reason why, why the miners' memorial is on the nineteenth of September. And our own mine has lost, had over a hundred and fifty fatalities. So this miners' memorial is, uh, an important mo- memorial for our city. And there's no doubt that as a mining community, we bat well above our weight. So, um, I'm really looking forward to, uh, this miners' memorial coming together and having that buy-in from local community members is, is the part that makes me the most proudest. All right, so if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us now to, um, item thirteen point three, which is a Community Development Overview Report for August twenty-twenty-three. Could someone move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the August twenty-twenty-three Community Development Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, Council McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coglan.
Thank you. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, I feel like because this meeting's been moved forward, it wasn't that long ago that I, that I spoke about these things included in the, in the report for August, um, namely being rodeo. I just want to once again congratulate them on having a fantastic event. Also, thanks to the race club for working so well to make it possible to have those two events held at the same time. Because it always, um, is an issue trying to hold two events in the, in a, in a tight space. But I know the mailman on the Thursday in the Indigenous rodeo, I attended both events and, um, they were very well attended and everyone seemed to be having a great time at both of them. And it was great to see some extra, um, things included in the Indigenous rodeo this year, namely a fashion parade as well. That was, um, very well received. And I can't, um, I might as well mention again, even though I did it last meeting, just congratulations to everyone from our staff involved in the street festival because it was a fantastic night. People are still talking about it, um, well done to everyone in the team.
Absolutely. Councillor Coglan, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to bring up, um, the bin skins and toilet deckles have, we're working on them to go over the bins, is that correct? Sorry.
Uh, this is a project the staff are working on, that's right?
Right, yeah. Um, going on from that, our cleaning schedule of the bins in Mount Isa, the Family Fun Park as well, um, no one's doing that at the moment. Have we got anything in our plans to rectify that? Because there's no program at all to, to clean our bins.
We'll take that on notice in terms of what the schedule is for, for bin cleanup.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I do want to ask about, the community grants and sponsorship. I'd just, um, like the CEO and the possible executive that it responds to. We have two rounds of these. Unfortunately, um, round two closes on the thirty-first of August. You open it for four weeks, Mount Isa City Council open it for four weeks. They open it in August, which is a really bad month. August, September are a bad month for anyone in Mount Isa because we're so busy and all that. I was just going to see if we could change the dates when these, when the funding opens up and have it open for six weeks, not four, just to be able to help sporting bodies and, um, community groups be able to, you know, get a little bit of time up to, to actually be able to put the grants in. Because I know, I know on the last one, there was a few people that missed out because they just honestly didn't have time with, um, they were sporting groups, just with, um, finals and of course rodeo and all that. So I'd just like if we could explore that option. I, I think it's a great initiative, but I just think our timing, especially on the second round, isn't the best. So if you could just take that on notice, please, Mr. CEO.
Thank you. And, and I'll just ask a question here, is what we, we put into the budget for a part-time role, a full-time, part-time role for a, a, um, sort of, uh, a grants officer to help people go for different grants around in the state government, federal government, uh, around the city. Is, is that something we're still pursuing? Yep. Yep, because I think-
Mount Isa City Council did have that. Robbie Cadder got that, um, funding when he was on council many years ago. But, um, the council before this absolved it into a different position.
Yep, so we, we've definitely put money in the budget. I just, that, I think that will go a long way as well because even with our own grants, I know people find it difficult, even though we, we, I, I think we've got some great staff there. But I think, you know, if, if some of these moms and dads and it's, it all seems too hard. So I think that will be great when we can get that role going. Um, I just want to congratulate the Drovers Camp Association because, um, the twenty-twenty-three festival was absolutely amazing and, uh, they had a lot of activities. It was absolutely fantastic and, uh, as a council, we're very proud to be a part of the sponsorship. And, uh, look, I'm, just can't thank them enough. Um, I also want to congratulate the, uh, Good Shepherd Parish for the, um, multicultural festival. That was huge. I, I think that was probably the biggest one I've seen, um, since I've been going to them. So, uh, big congratulations to them. It's so important that we, um, recognize what a multicultural city and country we are. So that was fantastic. And also the Mount Isa, uh, motorsport and recreation show, I went along to that. And there was more vehicles than I've ever seen because I'm used to seeing the usual cars, but there were a lot of different cars and it was, um, a really great event. So a big congratulations to them. Uh, and also, um, we've got on the thirteenth of October coming up, we've got the Apex Rock Pop Mime Show. So don't forget that one. That's one of the biggest, um, shows on Mount Isa's, uh, calendar. And also the next day, we have our council's welcoming babies, which is, um, always a, a, a really great event as well. So, um, keep an eye out for those ones. So if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item thirteen point four, which is the R A D F council-initiated project. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council endorses the R A D F committee council-initiated project to install a mural at thirty-three Mile Street, which is the southern adjoining wall to Centennial Place.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Council Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak?
Thanks, uh, um, so the mural is, uh, to, to be an addition and off the back of the Centennial Place, um, construction, which is well underway now, um, and it will be, uh, on the wall of the shops on the, uh, northern side, uh, there, which will be facing into Centennial Place. Um, so that, that design's being done at the moment. There's a cost there from, um, and a, um, a lo- uh, an artist who's done work here before has been engaged to complete the works. And, uh, so just quite looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, it's great to have the, um, permission from the, uh, the property owner to have that, um, mural on that wall. I know it was flagged in the early stages of the Centennial Place, um, uh, development, that, uh, possibility that that could happen. And the, uh, the quality of the artwork currently, uh, on the different sites around town is, um, is fantastic. And it'll be a great addition to Centennial Place.
Thank you. No other comments, councillors? No. Well, one for one, can't wait for Centennial Place to, to, um, be up and running, so that's something to really look forward to. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Did we put a time on councillor Tully coming back? Yeah.
He's back.
Terrific, okay, done. I didn't-
He's been eating.
Okay. All right, so thirteen point five, which is the Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report for July and August twenty-twenty-three. Would, uh, councillor Stretton like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, recommendation there, Madam Mayor, is that council receives and accepts the July twenty-twenty-three and August twenty-twenty-three Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Uh, councillors, Stretton, would you like to speak?
Yeah, just a few things there, Madam Mayor. Environmental Services and Biosecurity processed the total of three hundred and ninety-eight service requests, searches, inquiries and complaints between July twenty-twenty-three and August twenty-twenty-three. Um, I'd just like to note down in the report there that, um, the, um, flying foxes roosting in the trees identified, um, a great, um, risk to, um, pets and horses and stuff like that. So, um, we are, you know, monitoring the situation, but they are very hard to control.
Thank you. Any other questions or queries on this one? Through the chair?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor, just through the chair, I think with that water conversation, uh, conservation program, I think we should probably just check in with the water board and see if we can get them on board and do it as a sort of, you know, a combination between council and water board. I think that'd be a good idea.
Councillor Coglan, did you have a, um?
Oh, yeah, I do. Um, just on the biosecurity, it says here, the rural lands officer has been spraying castor oil in basic plants along the Lycart River. The activity has been put on hold due to the shortage of authorized officers. So they were doing it, we've put it on stop, but we are going to keep doing it once we've got the officer on board. Is that correct? Okay, righty-o. Um, the other one was the, um, the community tree planting project. Have we, um, again, I'd like to ask, have we actually put this out to the public at all? Or groups, community groups, to see if they want to plant any trees?
I think it, correct me if I'm wrong, Director, um, I think we've, we're propagating the trees at the moment and getting them across from Townsville, is that right? Or some from Townsville and some from where we're propagating?
That's correct. We've received some mature trees, which currently the depot, um, being acclimatized. Uh, and next step is to, to work on that tree planting schedule, noting that we are reaching quickly the end of the, the planting window. The team's also looking at as part of the free plant day, um, what additional community engagement activities we can deliver to increase, um, community participation.
But the, the free plants day doesn't usually include the trees. It's only them shrub, it's only the certain different plants. Are we going to expand that for trees for sporting on community groups?
It's certainly something we can look into.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's no other questions or queries? All those in favour? And that's carried. The next one goes to thirteen point seven, which is the Energy Efficiency Implementation Stage Three. Councillor Stretton, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Recommendation there, was it?
Did I miss one?
Yeah, thirteen point-
Sorry.
Thirteen point six.
Oh, thirteen point six, sorry. Um, environmental grant program for twenty-two, twenty-three, round one. Councillor Stretton, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Uh, recommendation there is council awards the following funds to organizations under round one of the environmental grant program, twenty-two, twenty-three. Berkeley Highway State School, PNC, ten thousand dollars. Good Shepherd Catholic College, one thousand five hundred dollars. Sunset State School, six thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, McCrae. Councillor Stretton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. The, um, that was round one of the environmental grant program that council initiated, um, opened on the twenty-second of March, twenty-twenty-three and closed on May twenty-two, twenty-three. The council receives three eligible applications of seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. And, um, this is open to all, um, groups if they, um, it comes out of the environmental charge that we, um, got in council.
Thank you. Any other, uh, queries or questions, councillors?
Yep, I have on this one. Um, I, I think, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is going to grow and grow each year, but I think it's up to the, not just the media from the council, but, um, also us councillors to go out and sell this one. I know when it first happened, we weren't too, uh, people weren't actually sure on what they could apply for. But the more, you know, there's some really good ideas people are coming with. So I think, um, between media as well as Mount Isa City councillors, um, this, this will grow and grow each year. It's a really good, um, initiative and hopefully next year we'll see more people applying for it.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, for all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, now that takes us to the energy, uh, thirteen point seven, which is the Energy Efficiency Implementation Stage Three. Over to you, councillor Stretton.
Uh, recommendation there is council awards a contract with three E group P T Y L T D for the contract award value of three million two hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and sixty-nine, excluding GST, to deliver energy conservation measures and delegates authority to the chief executive officer to negotiate and finalize and enter into the contract.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second, thanks, Barwick.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Stretton, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yeah, just a overview there is pre-qualified local buy-vendor panel was undertaken to source for the construction that would be suitable for installation of the ECM that is being supplied and installed by three E group under separate tender process based on the twenty-twenty-two audit and detailed feasibility study that was, um, done early in the year.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions on this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, look, it's, it's fantastic to see this, uh, program being implemented. Um, and once this contract's awarded, um, it's been, um, on our capital works, uh, for quite a while. Um, and, uh, yeah, this will, um, generate, um, a lot of savings in terms of our electricity usage and also go a long way to, um, assisting with the net zero targets that we're all, we're all going for at the moment. So there's, um, a range of different things being done. There's, um, LED upgrades to the lighting, um, throughout the council facilities. Um, there's, there will be solar, um, photovoltaic, um, systems on the roofs generating electricity to, into the, uh, into the, um, items that we use here, lights and motors, air conditioners, et cetera. And, um, there'll be more timing on the outdoor lighting, um, to, um, limit the amount of, um, uh, energy use and a range of other things, including variable speed drive motors for selected water pumps. Um, there's, um, uh, H V A C air and water systems will be optimized and, um, some other, other items such as the, uh, domestic hot water systems will be changed around to, to be electric heat pump operated and replacing of air conditioning units, um, um, to more efficient systems. So I think, um, overall, this is a great step forward for the council and I, I really, really welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments, councillors? Yeah, absolutely fantastic initiative. All right, all those in favour? Yeah, absolutely. Fantastic initiative. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And this takes us now to item fourteen, which is the Infrastructure Services Report and fourteen point one, which is the Waste Management Overview Report for August twenty twenty three. So I'll hand over to which councillor Tully?
Oh, I'll do.
All right.
Recommendation there, council receives and accepts the August twenty twenty three Waste Management Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, fortune.
Thank you.
Yeah, the operations continue at the Waste Management Facility during August. Notably, the facility was closed to the public on the sixteenth of August to undertake underground electrical services put in. I know, councillor, we copped a fair bit of flack over that. But I'm not on Facebook or any of those sort of sites. And I mean, it's just one of those things that if you turn up out there, I mean, I think the council done a pretty good job trying to advertise it. But I mean, you know, if you're not on that, I would have drove out there myself and had to turn around. I mean, some of those things you've just got to accept. You know, when they pop up like that. I mean, no different to a road being shut on the highway if there's a accident, you know?
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, you can put a lot of stuff out there, social media. But I mean, if you're not on it, there's not much you can do about it.
I think we were lacking, but in the fact that an email could have been sent to maybe builders and tree, you know, the lawn mowing businesses around town, maybe a week before or whatever, just to let them, like businesses that we know would go out there with truckloads of stuff.
I think it's worth investigating, is the better ways, for sure. I'm not sure if an email's the answer, but it's worth investigating how we can sort of get that word out because I know that sometimes I'm on the radio, we're talking about it on social media and we're putting it on every forum. But again, if you're not on Facebook or you're not on social media, you're missing the message. So I think Lindsay does a great job with our newsletter, you know, and maybe that has to become bigger and better. Who knows? Maybe we need to put more information on that and maybe that becomes an A four, A three sheet folded over with a lot more information. Who knows? It might have to grow. But there's definitely, you know, a lot of residents out there that are definitely not on social media and they're not getting the message. So you're right. All right then, well.
Just one more thing. How, through the chair, how are we progressing with finding funding for the Amnesty Days for the rubbish removal?
Yeah, we've had, we've certainly had some discussions at staffing levels and we're hoping probably we'll bring something to the next workshop that we have.
Okay.
Just on that, I'd just like it to be, if we do go ahead with it, we try and get it done before the storm season starts.
Yeah, and I think one of the workshops, or I think it was a workshop, we talked about putting it together with the Get Ready package as well and maybe get some funding with the Get Ready and, you know, because removing rubbish is a really important part of that storm season and getting, before they become missiles. All right, so let's vote, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to fourteen point two, which is the Works and Operations Overview Report for June and August twenty twenty three. Who would like to move the officer's recommendation? Councillor Tully?
You going with it, Mick?
Press the button.
You're on mute. You're on, hang on. That council receives and accepts the June twenty twenty three to August twenty twenty three Works and Operations Overview Report.
Thank you, councillor.
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one query. We were going to find out some more information about that Camryle Airport, whether we could get a downgrade or something from Casa. So yeah, I just don't think it's probably worth going out and spending that amount of money. So we were going to look into that. I'm not too sure if anything's been done, that's all.
Is there a motion in play?
No, I think, I think the last discussion council had was, there was the amount that was being extended or matched was sort of beyond what council wanted. Council gave its direction to keep returning the funding sources. So council, council offered.
So there's no motion in play at all? I can't remember, to be honest, I've seen a lot of information on it.
No, I think we budgeted, we got a million dollars fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Yep.
We had to put in a million, but.
Yeah, I think it was nine hundred.
Yeah.
Yep, and we may have voted that as part of a quarterly budget, maybe. Is that where I'm getting it from? I do remember.
It was in, there was amounts included in your budget, but council made the comment, I don't know whether it was a motion or not, that they would rather.
Extra funding, absolutely. Yep, all right, thank you.
Can I just ask, with the Works and Operations Overview Report, the full-time employee for the, doing the family fun park, how are we going with that?
I think Stephen was having a look at that before he went on leave.
Okay, so can someone take that up while he is on leave? Because it's actually a priority now. It's, yes, coming up to especially school holidays. We need someone in there full time.
Thank you, councillor. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, this goes to fourteen point three, which is Building Our Regions Round Six Required For Grant Milestones. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council acknowledges the required contribution, commits to delivering the project and acknowledges responsibility for all shortfalls if any individual projects expenditure exceeds the stated cost for the following projects. Those projects are listed there. I don't believe I have to read them all out.
No.
Okay, there are six projects there. They're, the figures are there that are attached to them. Thank you.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Streton.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
So these are projects that have been identified to work on under the Building Our Regions and funding body. So it just requires an endorsement from us for each of those grants and just to make sure, ensure that they're completed and that the council will be, you know, formally, complete the projects and pick up any shortfall with the budgets on them.
Any other comments or questions on this one?
No, for me, Madam Mayor.
All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. We have nil general business, which brings us into sixteen, which is the confidential, consideration of confidential business items. So councillors, I suggest we adjourn for fifteen minutes and resume at five to eleven. Thank you. Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J C of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with a local government's budget. Sixteen point two, notice of intention to sell land for over G rates and charges, lot nine on Crown Plan, M P H one four zero zero three, lot two on Crown Plan, M P H seven nine four nine, and lot on Crown Plan, M P H two one nine nine five. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J D and E of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal procedures that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J D and E of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J C of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J D and E of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J D and E of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J C of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J C of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J C of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Fortune. Okay, uh, councillors, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to sixteen point one, and Councillor Tully, I believe you're leaving the meeting now? Thank you.
Thank you, out of your team, have a good weekend.
See ya.
Thank you.
All right.
That takes us to item sixteen point one, which is the acquiza- acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. Someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'll move the recommendation that council approved the purchase of the residential, residential freehold property assessment number zero three nine six three dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, at the offer price of, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and approved the legal fees estimate of five thousand dollars for the relevant property transfers and searches, and authorised the acting CEO to finalise the purchase following the receipt of the satisfactory building inspection report.
Can I get a second of that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Well, thank you, everyone, for your attendance today. The time is now eleven oh eight AM, and I now declare this ordinary meeting of Man Lysa City Council. Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council moves out of closed, uh, council into open council? Uh, can I get a, someone move that motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second of that motion?
Stratton.
Uh, all those in favour? And that's carried. So the time is, uh, eleven oh five AM, and we're now back in open council. Absolutely, yep. So, Councillor Tully, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna move the second motion first, so you can stay in, and then I'll move the first motion after that, so you can jump out and keep going on with your day, if that's...
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, we're going to sixteen point two, um, which is the notice of intention to sell land. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that, um, council resolves to A, sell the land in the below schedule pursuant to section one one zero two of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve, sorry, that's one four zero two, and B, delegate to the chief executive officer its power to A, give a notice of intention to sell the land to all interested parties under section one forty three of the local government regulations two thousand and twelve, and B, take all further steps required under sections one four one, one four two, one four three, one four four, one four five, and one four six of the local government regulation two thousand and twelve, to effect the sale of land. Assessment number zero five nine nine three dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, lot nine of Crown Plan, M P H one four double O three, lot two on Crown Plan, M P H seven nine four nine, and lot one on Crown Plan, M P H two one nine nine five. This matter is considered to be confidential under section two five four J D and E of the local government regulation and that the council is satisfied that the discussion of this matter in an open me- meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by the local government or legal proceedings involving the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
Move, Stratton.
Thank you, Councillor Stratton. Can someone second that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Coghlan. All those in favour? And that's carried. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two five four J of the local government regulation for twenty twelve? Sixteen point one, acquisition of property assessment number zero three nine six three double zero double zero zero double zero zero. Someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'll move the recommendation that council approved the purchase of the residential, residential freehold property assessment number zero three nine six three dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, at the offer price of, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and approved the legal fees estimate of five thousand dollars for the relevant property transfers and searches, and authorised the acting CEO to finalise the purchase following the receipt of the satisfactory building inspection report.
Can I get a second of that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Well, thank you, everyone, for your attendance today. The time is now eleven oh eight AM, and I now declare this ordinary meeting of Man Lysa City Council. Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'll move the recommendation that council approved the purchase of the residential, residential freehold property assessment number zero three nine six three dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, at the offer price of, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and approved the legal fees estimate of five thousand dollars for the relevant property transfers and searches, and authorised the acting CEO to finalise the purchase following the receipt of the satisfactory building inspection report.
Can I get a second of that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Well, thank you, everyone, for your attendance today. The time is now eleven oh eight AM, and I now declare this ordinary meeting of Man Lysa City Council. Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Thank you. Um... Councillors, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?[1460.11]